Well, I can't do it.
If you spread a little thin, wouldn't you?
I got a broad account.
Okay.
Usually when you're diving for work, you're not going to find something good.
No.
Ready, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Good evening. It is seven o'clock on August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty. It is the regular City Council meeting for the city of Spring Hill. Our first order of business, as always, is our invocation. Is Pastor Brown with us? Pastor, if those of you who wish, please stand and join us in prayer. Pastor Brown, thank you for joining us. You have the floor.
Would you adopt a solemn attitude as I pray? Dear Heavenly Father, we wish to thank you today for the many blessings you have bestowed upon this great city. We thank you for the freedom to meet together, the freedom to make decisions in the community. We ask your blessings upon those who safeguard that freedom, and particularly for our local first responders. There's a great responsibility on everyone in this room, and so therefore I pray today for our mayor, for the various city officials and staff, and for this assembled council. May you grant to these people tonight the wisdom to govern your people, a sense of the true needs of the citizens, a thirst for justice and righteousness, the grace to work together within honest disagreement, and personal peace within their lives and a joy in their task tonight. Please grant these things. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please continue standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Leighton?
Here.
Mr. Owen?
Here.
Mr. Graves?
Here.
Mr. Eckert?
Here.
Mrs. Hughes?
Here.
Mayor, we do have a quorum present.
Thank you very much. Next item of approval of the agenda, I have two requests, one addition, one deletion in reverse order. Request to remove item number six. There was not a quorum at the last Planning Commission meeting, therefore the CIP could not be approved by them, which is a condition precedent to the City Council taking that issue up. And I also have a request to add an executive session pursuant to the attorney-client exception, which we would take as item sixteen after announcements and reports. Are there any council-requested additions or deletions?
Mayor, a question.
Mm-hmm.
Minutes from our past meetings. I haven't noticed that we've had any minutes from our last, or quite a few meetings.
Madam Clerk?
Those are out for, to get transcribed, and there's a delay. She had a personal issue come up, and so they are delayed. I did get the first one in June. However, I haven't had an opportunity to listen to the tape to make sure that it's the correct people speaking.
All right.
So on the next agenda, you'll have some to approve, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other requested additions or deletions? Mayor, move to approve the agenda as revised.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, aye. Motion carries five zero zero. This takes us to citizen participation. This is an opportunity in the meeting for residents to address the council on items not already on the agenda. Anyone wishing to do so, we just ask that you step up to the lectern and state your name and address for the record. First individual signing up is Mr. Peterman. Mr. Peterman, welcome.
Thank you very much. Bill Peterman, nineteen four thirty-one West Two Hundredth Street, Spring Hill. I just want to thank everybody that gave me the well wishes and the prayers for my granddaughter. Chad Eckert, Steve Owens, and Tyler Graves, and Chief Henson, thank you very much. I appreciate it. The last meeting tonight, and to see a lot of patrolmen back there that I've heard a lot of good comments from, so it means a lot to grandparents and parents when you have a daughter that has leukemia. So the big thing that I wanted to talk about is it's that time of year when the administration goes around to the chief department heads and asks for how much money are you going to use that was allotted to you this year? So that they can get money back and put in a fund so that they can pay other things with it. My question on that is, when they do that, they make the decision on the money that you already made the decision on. My question is, why doesn't it come back to you when they say, "We would like to spend this money on this, this, and this", and you guys still have to vote on where it does go? Because then it's accountable money. When they just do it, the money's not accounted for. We have no idea. So that's my question on that, and I'll leave it with that.
I'll ask Mr. Hendershot to reach out to you and discuss that. And next person on the list, Mr. Allen Brand. Welcome.
Chad Allen Brand, live at two oh nine two nine Maple Terrace. So I'll send a soft copy to everybody after, because I don't want to make this, you know, super long-winded. There's a lot in here, and, you know, probably the most controversial thing in this town is internet. And I'm back here to talk about it one more time, hopefully the last time. I can't tell you that. But, you know, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. And, you know, what can I say from the last time I was here in February? Is, you know, twenty twenty's brought about a lot of change. You know, changes in our lives that, you know, we couldn't even imagine. Our need for high-speed, reliable internet access, working from home, kids online, working from school, people searching for jobs, all of in-between has made the internet just as important as having electricity and water in your house. I'm here, you know, because Southern Link and Century Link have not gotten better. We haven't seen improvements. And honestly, as a community, we haven't heard from the leadership of this community in months. The transparency is the keys, you know, is the key, that the bricks and the foundation of that leadership and that trust in that leadership is built on. So, you know, I'm asking some tough questions here, and, you know, really, I encourage the governing body to go over, body to over-communicate and share with the community what they know about any and all progress, or the plans from the existing and new providers. In September of two thousand and nineteen, the city had a launch event for RG Fiber. People got excited, and that hope faded. In January of two thousand and twenty, we were encouraged by the governing body to tell the City Council that we want ALO Communications now, and that we want no more delays. The council voted, and ALO was selected. Here we sit, six months later, waiting on a DA investigation, you know, still hoping for that sign of a faster future. You know, and I sent an email that Mr. Hendershot replied to earlier. I think it was the twenty-ninth he replied to that. There's been discussions with Southern Link. Southern Link has talked about plans, doing fiber expansions in town, upgrades in town, and that you're working through permits with them. Those plans, but in your discussions with Southern Link, I'll tell you my experience. There was a big outage la, or last week with Southern Link. It lasted a week long, affected a hundred and fifty to two hundred users in Spring Hill. You know, it was kind of all over social media, and I had no, no way to get ahold of anybody that could help me with my issue with Southern, at Southern Link. Text came out, text left, and on Friday, I finally reached out to Travis Nance, which is a VP at Southern Link. He got me in touch with somebody. They worked until nine o'clock that evening, you know, working on the issue, and actually discovered it was damaged cabling behind Gambino's. They ran a temporary cable. That cable was laying there. I reached out to Mr. Hendershot about that cable, because it's actually just laying through the creek, laying in the lawn of the library. There was cones that have put up, but that cable, I drove by it tonight. It's still just laying there. Southern Link hasn't replaced it. So, I mean, they don't have the customer service. They don't have technicians that serve Spring Hill. The technician to work on it had to come from Saint Joe. So it was kind of a nightmare process to go through to get that fixed, but I think we'd probably still be having issues if I didn't finally find that VP that did an executive-level escalation to get it fixed. So, I mean, you know, and I talked to the tech, and the tech did say that, you know, "Hey, we're trying to expand here", and he basically, his exact words were, "The city is really hard to work with. Our construction engineers have trouble getting permits pushed, or not permits, but they have to do five times the paperwork in Spring Hill that they do anywhere else." You know, we've, we've heard that from other providers, whether it's RG Fiber, whether it's Go Brawley. You know, it's kind of the same thing that we're hearing, and it's like, you know, Spring Hill is harder to work in. So I've got, you know, a series of questions related around the broadband initiatives that we've done, or that we're in the process of doing, but, you know, some questions are, is, you know, is the city doing anything actively to bring, you know, work with the incumbents to make the network better, to expand the network? What are those plans, if any? And outside of ALO, is there any discussions with any other providers to come in and provide service? And the incentives that are offered, I think it's the two thousand and nineteen R fourteen. Is that being, I know, because there's some, there's some stipulations around that, that it's a citywide thing. So even if a provider wants to come in and says, "Hey, I know the communities north of town, they've got fiber, they've got decent service out there, but the original part of the city, you know, some people just have DSL, you know, some of the neighborhoods, especially where, you know, some of you guys live, you have DSL and can only get ten meg. Can we go into those communities and still get that benefit? You know, still, can we, we're not going to, you know, necessarily do the whole city, but maybe if we go into a piece of it? Are you looking at any way to, as an incentive, to bring those providers in, or bring somebody in, or bring anybody in while we wait on this investigation to finish?"
We've met with multiple providers. We have discussed what we have available as far as the resolution that you referred to. Any provider who would like to only provide for a portion of the city, we would be all ears. The intent behind that providing gigabit-capable services for public sale had to do with the fact that we're not going to open up our right-of-way for somebody who simply wants to lay fiber to bypass us. So that's why it's, that's why it's written the way that it is. We want anybody who's going to take advantage of that free permit to be able to actually sell services to us. I can tell you that in my neighborhood, Century Link has made a number of improvements. There are houses behind me that are getting fiber. Unfortunately, my portion in the neighborhood isn't, but they've recently upgraded services, so I can at least get thirty meg. And I'll tell you, Mr. Allen Brand, ten meg would have been a dream to have. I think it's been three months now since I've been able to upgrade. Six megabit was the max. So they are making improvements. With regard to your concern about the cable, I mean, obviously, we can't force Southern Link to fix it. I'm also concerned about the comments that the technician made. Is Mr. Burton, there he is. Mr. Burton, have you had anybody from Southern Link attempt to get permits?
No, we, we worked through one permit that had been lingering on, but no, we did not have any permits.
What was, Mr. Hendershot?
Our city engineer, Dan Miller, and I have had conversations with Southern Link regarding permits in various subdivisions. There were some construction plans, issues that we needed them to address to meet with our right-of-way ordinance. We did discuss, absolutely discuss with them, the resolution for the waiver of permits. They've taken that back and are adjusting their plans accordingly. I thought our meeting went very well, and they are looking at several subdivisions in town, as well as bringing in improved service from the south, from Paola, to service Spring Hill. But we have absolutely have met with Southern Link twice that I have, and some concerns about where they were locating equipment, aesthetics, et cetera, that they were, they understood, and we're going back to make those adjustments to their drawings before they officially submitted for that right-of-way permit.
Okay. As to that complaint that the technician made to you, as well as the issue of the cable, I do have, through some of the work that we've done with Southern Link, a contact for their Government Affairs Director at their, at Southern Link's parent company, Altice, and I can reach out to him tomorrow and share some of these concerns. I'm concerned that a technician is making these comments, because it's not a technician that's coming into the city to do any work. And Mr. Burton, is there anything else you wanted to add?
Most of the conversation, I'm sorry, most of the conversation that I've had, most of the conversation that I've had with everyone was a contractor. That was actually going to be contracted out by Southern.
Okay. And, Mr. Hendershot, you've been working directly with Southern Link leadership?
There were both Southern Link. I'm sorry, there were both Southern Link representatives and contractors at those meetings, yes.
Okay. Very good, very good. So I'll ask, I'll ask the Government Affairs Director to dig into that for us. Okay?
I had a couple more questions I wanted to add. In the RFP, I know that, you know, there was a matrix done, there was scoring done, and there was a selection made. Is there a reason why we only selected one provider, as not opposed to selecting multiple providers to try to enter into negotiations with?
It was intentionally, I intentionally removed myself from that process so that we could have someone who could work with other people who wanted to talk about coming in, so I can't answer that. Mr. Hendershot, can you?
An RFP process generally is designed to select an individual company. When we went through that review process, it was the opinion of the review committee that ALO separated themselves from the others. That's why the recommendation came to council to enter into those contract negotiations, and then council approved that, that, that method. I don't know that it's common to approve an RFP and then enter into contract negotiations with multiple parties. That's just not a common practice.
Okay.
Now, had, had we not been able to reach contract agreements and coming back before the council, I'm sure the guidance would have been, "What's our next step? Or what's our next company that we could look at?"
Okay. And the last thing I had was, as far as, you know, today, like, I went back through two thousand and sixteen today, and we've spent, you know, roughly a little over a hundred thousand dollars related to broadband. It's a mix of everything from, you know, CTC that was hired to, you know, the legal work that was needed, you know, just, just kind of everything in between. So a significant amount of money that's been spent to this point, and as citizens, we don't have any benefit from it yet. Not saying that there's not things that lead up to a benefit eventually, but we just, nothing, there's no return on the investment of the, you know, what's there yet. And I know from Mr. Hendershot, in his, the email I got, the, you know, the DA still has it. They're still investigating it. The city is not getting information, but the city's aware of interviews that have taken place. So I guess the, at the end of it, like, do we know when that investigation is going to come to an end? When there's going to be, you know, a decision made and that we can actually move forward? I mean, we're like six months now.
I do not know. What I do know is, is that there has been a request for some additional information from the DA's investigator. We're going to be vetting that request tonight. And my intention, and I will say, I think, that the information that I have indicates that everyone has been cooperative, everyone has been responsive, that there have not been delays on the city side. But one of the things that we do have to remember as well is that the District Attorney's Office is also investigating the murder of a police officer, as well as other high-profile criminal acts. There's only so many resources that they have available. I know that, I know that this is important, but those are just the, those are just the logistical challenges of the District Attorney's Office, and I believe that they are working at, at a very appropriate pace. I know it's challenging, and I know it's frustrating, but we've got to get to the point where everybody hears what I believe we're going to hear, and that is that there was no corruption in the process, there was no collusion in the process, and we can move forward. And that's what I believe is going to happen. But we, we're doing everything.
So do we feel like, once we get that decision and everything is, you know, cleared, that it's full steam ahead, then? It's not going to be like, oh, we'll wait six months to, you know, start to do this?
That's up to these five folks. I don't have to vote on that, but that's certainly what my encouragement would be.
That'd be my priority, for sure.
Well, I've taken enough of your time, all right? Thank you.
No, it's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Allen Brand.
My comment is, is just to say, you're not the only one. I mean, all of us up here, it's okay, Lee, are affected by broadband and the issues. I personally was affected by that outage last week, suddenly. And the one thing I did want to say is, is Mr. Burton contacting Southern Link about the burying of the cable and all that other stuff?
No, I will. There's, we have no authority over.
I know, but one thing to point out to that person when they talk, I, my, my next-door neighbor has asked three times to have a cable buried in the backyard, and he and I were talking about this like the last few weeks. He can't even get a cable buried in his backyard. That's how unresponsive, I mean, that we're finding out, so. Okay. So I just want to sit there and say, one is, is that we identify. It's not that we're sitting up here and you down there are being affected and we're not. I mean, we're your neighbors. We're in the community with you, and we're dealing with the same struggle that you are, and we want it just as badly as you do. Especially like my son, I don't know if you know my son or not, but he wants to remind me that, yeah, we got ten meg, is what they say we get in our house, but really, really, truly don't get that ten meg. So.
Also, we, we are still working on it as far as other avenues. I just spoke to Mr. Hendershot about this about a week and a half ago. One of the upcoming grant opportunities outside of the CARES Act is now the Department of Commerce is looking to do some grants for communities like ours to specifically address broadband during COVID and going forward. Specifically about how we strengthen our telehealth, how we strengthen our schools' resources. And since we do have the CTC proposal, and we know some numbers behind some of the options that we have, I believe Mr. Hendershot was going to continue working on, as soon as that grant opportunity gets released, maybe submitting something for that on the behalf of the city directly, because right now, all the CARES funding has gone to the counties, and we have to work with the counties to bring it down to the city. My understanding is the Department of Commerce grants are for any community looking to strengthen their broadband as a result, or showing how COVID had affected that and overwhelmed their systems. And so we are looking forward to trying to get some grant money.
Is there, like, information like that, or like, even what's going, like, you had discussions with Southern Link, or things that are going on that can be shared, like, in, you know, the monthly outlook or anything like that? I think it'd be important for people to know that there's, people are trying to do things.
The, well, the CARES Act issue and the money that the legislature is pumping out, that's information from this week. And that's information that's readily available. We can put in something, I think we can certainly say, here's what we're looking at. One of the things, though, that we, one of the things that we struggle with is when, for example, a company comes in and says that they're interested in coming into Spring Hill, is, is that we can't disclose who they are. We can't disclose what the content of the conversation was. And it makes it difficult, because we don't want to scare away potential new providers, but it doesn't make it very clear that we're continuing to entertain people who are interested in coming to Spring Hill.
No, I understand, yeah.
But I think, I think some of that information, we can definitely get out into the, out into the airstream.
I think it'd just be nice for people to see that, you know, there's, I, I'm not saying there's not anything going on, but it's been awful quiet, and there's been a lot of reasons why it's quiet, but, you know, just so people could see that, hey, you know, there's, there's still, you know, there's still a pulse on this. We're still working on this. We're still doing that.
Yeah, thirty meg is a floor for me. It's not a ceiling. I've got too many kids running out of the house, much like Mr. Leighton, who are broadband hogs, so I absolutely, absolutely feel your pain, Mr. Allen Brand.
All right.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Holland, you have signed up for item number nine. We'll take that in order of the agenda, okay? All right, the floor remains open.
Riffle two zero zero two four Barker Street. I just had a follow-up question, because I didn't hear the answer. Mr. Mary, you mentioned that you removed yourself from the RFP process, and I apologize, you gave your answer, but I wasn't able to hear why you removed yourself from the.
I didn't really remove myself from it. I never became a part of it, because in the event that there were companies, because we were hearing from people who did not want to participate in the RFP process, we wanted to keep those two things separate. So I elected for me to be a contact person so that we could have a conversation and not run afoul of somebody in the RFP process, saying, "Oh, you shared information with them", or "You're treating them differently than you are us". So we always kept that wall, that screen, in place between those two things. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Floor remains open. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close that portion of the program. Excuse me, and we'll move on to the first of our only presentation, rather, Life Saving Award. Chief Henson, you have the floor.
Well, I, I'm not sure if this is something that, it is something we should certainly celebrate. It's, it's, it's something that, as a police department, to have an opportunity or to be available to answer the call when someone is suffering a life-threatening injury or health condition, that we have officers available to respond, to provide immediate aid. And so tonight, I actually get to acknowledge two of our officers with Life Saving Awards. The first is with. The first is with Travis Sisson, and this is Tate. On March 8th, at approximately 4:30 or 4:00 AM, Officer Sisson responded to the Hale Street on a medical call. When he arrived, he found Mr. Jeff Olivius unconscious on the kitchen floor. Mr. Olivius was not breathing and was unconscious. Officer Sisson took immediate action and began to administer chest compressions. When medics arrived on scene, they were able to locate a pulse. Mr. Olivius was transported to the Lathem Medical Center where he recovered. In recognition of your quick response and efforts that were instrumental in saving the life of Mr. Jeff Olivius on March 8th, the City of Spring Hill and the Spring Hill Police Department presents you with the life-saving award and ribbon. The Officer Blunt. On March 23rd, at approximately 4:22 PM, not AM, Officer Blunt responded to Skyview Lane on a medical call. When he arrived, Mr. Clinton Mooney did not have a pulse. Officer Blunt took immediate action and began to administer chest compressions. Medics arrived on scene and a pulse was observed. Mr. Mooney was also transported to the Lathem Medical Center. The following day, Officer Blunt went back and spoke to the family and learned that Mr. Mooney was still at the Lathem Medical Center recovering. So in recognition of your quick response and efforts that were instrumental in saving the life of Clinton Mooney on March 23rd, the City of Spring Hill and the Spring Hill Police Department presents you with this life-saving award. And by the way, this is the second life-saving, so he just says, no. That's all I have.
Chief, what a what a a wonderful presentation. You know, I I think it is so easy for people to forget how critical first responders are. I think it's easy to complain when you get pulled over and issued a citation. I think it's easy to complain at how long maybe it takes for a non-emergency call. One of the reasons is this is because these are the people who show up first. They are the ones who break down the door, they are the ones who are there to save lives, but also put their lives on the line every single day. Officers Blunt and Sisson, congratulations, and on behalf of a very grateful community, and what I am certain are two very grateful families, we are so very proud of you. Thank you. Next item is our consent agenda.
Mayor, move that we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, aye. Motion carries 500. This takes us to the first of several formal action items. Item number four is adoption of the 2021 operating budget. Mr. Hendershot, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening. The memo that is in the packet is what I'm will be reading from for the benefit of the public that's here. I'll just read from that memo. In preparation of the city's first biannual budget, an organizational-wide review of revenue, service operations, capital projects, and outside agency requests was conducted. This extreme review, I'm sorry, extensive review process included the city council and all city departments, with the newly added exercise of department-led presentations and prioritization of requests by the city council. The operating budget consists of four major funds that receive property tax revenues to support service and operational expenditures, general fund, debt service fund, fire fund, and cemetery fund. Revenues are derived from property tax, sales tax, franchise fees, sales and service development fees, special assessments, and transfers from enterprise and capital project funds. As anticipated, the COVID-19 pandemic does have a financial impact on the 2021 and 2022 forecast, as there is as there is less opportunity for unanticipated revenues and expenditure savings to roll over to the new year, creating less flexibility in the options for funding new requests. Prioritization of all requests and capital projects will allow the city council to make sound decisions as financial projections change over the coming months and years. A concentrated effort was made was made to ensure the public was given ample opportunity to participate in the budget process, especially under the challenges faced during COVID-19 pandemic. Over the course of the budget process, the city held eight public meetings, available either in person or through Zoom platform, offered an online request form for city capital improvement ideas, dedicated an email address specifically for budget questions, published the budget calendar in the newsletter, posted all budget materials on the city website, and held a public hearing in which the public had an opportunity to ask questions or provide comment on the proposed budget. And Mayor, I might add, on those issues there of those opportunities for the public, we did receive, I believe, four or five, several CIP suggestions, which were considered. We did have one resident speak at the public hearing. We did not receive any email requests or or questions through that platform. While the city has elected to create a biannual budget, biannual budget, the city state of Kansas allows only one year to be certified for the purpose of living taxes. The 2021 operating budget will be certified to Johnson and Miami Counties on August 25, 2020. From a valuation standpoint, we have seen a a nice increase, 9.1% an increase in valuation from Miami County, 10.64% increase in Johnson County, bringing our total valuation to 104 million 709,560, which equals a 9.1 increase over 2019. One mil calculated at this rate would be 104,709, however, because Spring Hill is a no-fire area, calculated into the overall valuation, an average mil is equivalent to approximately 89,318. The 2021 budget is proposed at an ad valorem tax level that is estimated at a near-level mil levy for 2020. Since the proposed budget has been published and a public hearing held, the city council has the opportunity to approve the 2021 budget at the published amount of ad valorem or lower amount, but cannot increase the amount of ad valorem without republishing a public notice and holding another public hearing. And then you have a snapshot of that budget. It is important to note that the setup of the state form records the actual expenditures from 2019, projected expenditures for 2020, and the projected expenditures for 2021. The budget authority for 2021 appears as though total expenditures have nearly doubled from 2020 projections. However, the budget authority includes reserve amounts for each fund that are not intended to be spent totaling $7,638,000, or $638,680. With regards to the fire area contract, Johnson County Fire District Number Two provides fire services to the contracted area within Spring Hill. Funding for this contract is through a dedicated mil levy in the Spring Hill budget. The estimated contract for 2021 is $793,800. Only those residents living within the fire contract of Spring Hill receive a city mil levy associated with this cost. Other residents receive a mil levy from Johnson County for the cost of their fire services, excuse me. The 2021 budget includes new expenditures prioritized by the council, including the hiring of one new police officer and associated costs, temporary labor and material for street maintenance, technology, security, and storage, ongoing maintenance and improvements for water and sewer utilities, increased contract costs for fire services, and equipment purchases supporting law enforcement. Two unfilled staff positions, accounting supervisor and street maintenance worker have been suspended for the 2020 2021 year to redirect funds needed in the support of the 2021 budget. From a recommendation standpoint for the 2021 budget, Mayor and his staff does recommend the city adopt the 2021 budget at an amount of ad valorem tax of $3,555,937. I'm available for questions, as is Assistant City Administrator Ms. Landis.
Questions?
Mayor, move to approve or adopt, excuse me, the 2021 operating budget?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I have some questions. I know when we first started this, I had a concern about some monies in the budget, like miscellaneous uniforms, looking at some of the stuff here. And every time I looked at the budget as we're going through this, things seem to change or catch my eye, professional development. And a couple of them here that I look at is, we have human resources, hasn't used professional development development money for the last three years, but we keep raising it in our budget. And then we go to finance. Finance has used $1,300, $1,700, $1,100 last year, which 20 is a weird year, because we did things change. I understand that. But we've increased professional development up to $8,000, and $9,000 next year in uniforms. I'm a little puzzled about the uniforms. I've always kind of wondered about them as who in finance has uniforms? So that's my concern as I look through the budget, and within about 20 minutes tonight, I found about $20,000. I thought, oh, we could use that to help pay for the the motion to put the Justice Center on the, you know, out for a a vote with the citizens. So that concerns me, just those items there of were increasing budget line items, but it doesn't appear, if I go back through the years, that we've been using what we've already had, but we keep increasing it. So those types of things, I guess what I brought up the first time, nobody seemed to have an issue with it. I still do. So for me, I probably will be voting no on the budget issue because of that.
Ms. Landis, the uniforms and finance.
I'm sorry. The uniforms for all administrative staff, you will notice that in all departments that aren't in the field. We allocate about $100 per staff member for city logoed shirts. And so that would include the administrative staff that aren't in the field, and so you'll find that in all departments.
Okay. Yeah, I saw it in all departments. I just was looking at one and just saw it, so that's what I brought up that made me think about it. Yeah, I understand that.
And Mr. Hendershot, the increase in professional services with regards to training?
I'm sorry.
Professional development. Development, okay. What we ask our department heads to do is to discuss with their staff their their continuing education needs for to remain retain their certifications, and what kind of conferences, attendances that they may see on the horizon. We have them estimate what those costs may be, and then those are reviewed. As we have, I know I know you mentioned HR.
Right.
In HR in particular, we have very fortunate to have an HR manager now who has numerous certifications and brings an extreme level of professionalism there. So her need to continue those education issues are prevalent for her and a priority for her for those professional certifications, as are those for our inspectors, for wastewater, for water, all of those individuals, police department. Many of us have certifications that add to the professional level of our staff, but must have continuing education. We review those, costs do increase there. As you noted, this year, we've frozen any any. The the training we're going to is now absolutely essential, is what we're spending our dollars on there, but it's absolutely something that we do keep an keep an eye on. Ms. Landis is very good about explain to us what these what these conferences are, how they benefit the city, and then we review those accordingly.
Now, Mr. Hendershot?
Yes, sir.
This is a budget, that doesn't mean that we have to go out and expend every dollar, correct?
That's correct.
So it's a budget, and we do have in our accounts here and there where we have an encumbrance for the next year, correct? And we don't use the full budget up, and it goes to the next year, and then that we account for in the next year for our spending.
That's correct.
So it's a budget item, that's not something that we necessarily spend all our money on, correct?
Correct, and that would be where we, any of those line items can be reallocated or changed over time, should we see a change in staffing level, should we see a change in need? We've done that already this year by going through and saying, okay, we can't travel anywhere, so are there some savings there? How can they be reallocated to other places that didn't get funding, that needed funding this year, and or towards the the overall dollars that we're expecting to not receive this year? So those line items themselves can change within the budget. It would just be that if you're approving or adopting the budget, you're adopting the overall amount for the total budget for everything, not necessarily that that those line items can change at some future point.
And we have discretion through the year, so like if if we're not going to use that full budget, we have the discretion of shifting that from that account to another account within the general fund if we need to, correct?
Absolutely, and this year is a perfect example of that. We have already drawn some funds, budgeted funds from places we know that aren't going to be used and reallocated that to other expenditures that we know are going to occur. So, yeah, that's a perfect example, yeah.
Like a perfect example, this is on our vendor list tonight for the appropriation order for 018889 for Norris, Kiplinger, Hicks, and Wilder LLC, where we had an unforeseen expense of around $9,026 and $702 for a special investigation. So those things do arise and occur.
That was one of the things that the public comments was about, was the appropriation of funds from departments and then moved to a different department. And that's that's something that happens, just can you explain that a little bit?
How frequently is that occurring, Ms. Landis?
Sure. Especially when we went started this budget process this year, we asked everybody to say, okay, take a look at where you're at this year. That was kind of in coordination with the COVID, first look at how what is our impact going to be, so that we could take a look at the current budget, we could take a look at the future budget, what may you not be spending this year that could be reallocated to those things that didn't get priority before, that maybe became priority now. It could be anything from new expenditures or unexpected expenditures that might come up, it could be anything within the departments where we didn't allocate enough dollars, but know now that we're going to need additional dollars. Because remember, that budget was adopted in August and put together in May, June, and July of last year, so sometimes things do change, and the organization changes, and the priority of where you'd like to spend those dollars do change. So as those dollars aren't spent towards the end of the year, if there's something that did come up, they're probably being reallocated to those expenditures, or if you see the beginning fund balance in each of those reports that we've given you, that beginning fund balance is excess revenue that came in that was either unanticipated or expenditures that didn't end up being spent from the previous year. So any additional revenue, any less expenditures, those come together to create your beginning fund balance for the new year. Or they can be reallocated. If you remember, last year, we came to the council in December and said, hey, we had some unexpected revenues come in over the year, it's about $150,000, we'd like your permission to move that to the equipment fund to be able to put that towards purchase of future vehicle and approved vehicle and equipment purchases, so that we don't have to lease as many vehicles over time, saving the city and the taxpayers' interest dollars. And we also brought to you in December an encumbrance list that shows, these are the intended expenditures at the end of the year that might be carried over to the next year. So we do have opportunity to come back and reevaluate.
But we don't submit this entire budget worksheet to them, we only submit a certain budget, right? We just submit the first few documents to the state, correct?
The line item budget that you might be referring to with the actual line item in the previous expenditures and current, that doesn't go to anyone, that's an internal working document that we use to facilitate operations overall. The state budget document that was in the packet is what does go to the county, and it does go to the state, and it sets the maximum amount that you could spend in that budgeted year. And so as we fill out those forms and as we do our audit annually, they look back to make sure that we didn't expend more dollars than what we planned to. Or if something were to occur and we needed to spend some of those budgeted reserves, or you had additional revenues come in that you wanted to spend that weren't originally budgeted for, we can do an amended budget each year during towards the end of the year to allow that to occur as well.
But throughout the year, we have the discretion to go through those line items and change them as needs, it's not something set in stone.
Absolutely, and the department heads do use that to plan the year and the operations of the overall city. So sometimes, I think this is a conversation we had when we were talking about the spending plan, sometimes the dollars aren't available late in the year to come back and redirect, but if we wanted to redirect operations earlier in the year when those dollars were still available, that could
It's like any organization I've been with, especially large corporations, this is a this is a a planning tool for the upcoming year, it's not a set thing in stone of this is how we have to do things.
Absolutely.
One of the, one of the critical functions of a department head, as well as myself and Ms. Landis, is to routinely review these line item budgets and look for items that may appear to be out of line, or for those department heads to say, um, there's a, an awesome training opportunity that really will be a benefit. Um, and you know, so we're looking at, okay, are there other line items that maybe you're not spending those on so that we can maybe provide that opportunity or vice versa. We're constantly reviewing that through the year.
Well, to that point, like, I don't understand why you wouldn't invest in your employees. Like, if we want to be the best and continue to grow, invest in those employees rather than hire, get someone new, hire, get someone new, invest in your employees, like the best investment you can make.
I mean, a perfect example is our police department where we're making more investments in them as we can. And I think we're starting to see, you know, the fruit of that. So, cause I'm, I'm receiving very positive, you know, feedback on them especially. So, um, those are the types of things like Mr. Gray said, that those investments actually do have an ROI on.
Okay. Is there any more discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Budget is adopted four, one, zero. There is a budget form that, uh, does require the signature of all council members. I will start that and pass that down. Let me make sure we get that done. All right. Next item of the agenda, on the agenda rather, is item number five, approval of the 2022 operating budget. One of the things that I want to preface here is, is that we don't know what revenues in 22 are going to look like. This is being used as a guide to help us to understand what we may be facing. And I think from a planning perspective is ideal for being able to set expectations, give us a jumpstart on the 22 budget session, and help us to solicit even more and better feedback from the community as to what the community wants. So I'm very excited, um, that the council agreed to proceed with the biennial budget when I had recommended that. I hope that we find this to be an excellent tool for us as we go into 22. Mr. Hendershot? Thank you, Mayor. Um, the, the memo that is in the packet is nearly identical until we get to page three of the, uh, opening of that memo where it's entitled proposed 2022 budget. In there, it says the 2022 operating budget has been prepared to support continuing service and operational expenditures. While requests for funds have been reviewed and prioritized, only the carryover of existing and new expenditures for 2021 have been included in the proposed budget for 22. As financial projections become clearer over the coming months, reevaluation of the 2022 budget will be presented to council for their consideration. Mayor, it is staff's recommendation, the city, city council approve the 2022 budget on the condition that it may be updated in 2021 with new revenue projections and potential changes to operating needs.
Mayor moved to approve the 2020, 2022 operating budget. That's not an adoption, that's a move to approve.
I second it.
We have a motion at a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero, zero. This takes us to item number se-
Yes, or yes.
Okay. This takes us to item number seven, consideration of approval of resolution 2020 dash R zero eight, City Coronavirus Relief Fund, Fund, rather. Mr. Hendershot, you have the floor. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening again. As we work through the CARES and Spark funding programs, uh, one of the things I want to, to hopefully clarify to everyone if you're not certain. The state of Kansas program is called Spark. That money is, um, allocated to a hundred and three counties. It was not allocated to Johnson County or Sedgwick County because of their population. Those two counties receive funding directly from the federal government. So we're, we're balancing two different programs here. With regards to the Miami County program, uh, there, there is the need for cities within those hundred and three counties, of which Miami County is one of, uh, for the cities within that, those counties to adopt this rev- res- excuse me, resolution. Um, Miami County has received a little over six point eight million dollars to help address the health and economic challenges inflicted by COVID-19, based on Miami County's population and impact, with funds provided for reimbursement of COVID-19 related costs and as direct aid unless otherwise approved by the Spark Task Force. Portions of these funds are available to cities within Miami County. What this resolution does is it authorizes the county to reimburse the city of Spring Hill and allows us to participate in funding opportunities with Spark funds, uh, at the ratio of forty percent of Miami County, sixty percent with Johnson County. Because Johnson County is, is on the CARES funding, a common resolution like this is not required. It is required for the Spark funds. Uh, we have submitted to both counties our reimbursements to date of expenses to date, uh, at the rate of forty percent to Miami County and sixty percent to Johnson County. We do continue to, as, uh, Councilwoman Hughes alluded to, look at programs for funding opportunities going forward, not only for reimbursement, but for funds that are available on how we can improve the quality of life for our residents based on the impact of COVID. Uh, this resolution allows us to participate in that program with Miami County. It is staff's recommendation to approve the resolution. I do not have a number, Mayor.
Twenty twenty R zero eight. Moved to approve resolution number twenty twenty dash R dash zero eight.
Second.
A motion at a second. Is there any, any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Carries five, zero, zero. This takes-
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hendershot. This takes us to item number eight, consideration of a resolution of intent for industrial revenue bonds for Midham Building Supply. Ms. Landis, you have the floor.
Thank you. The governing body adopted resolution 2019 R fifteen with the intent to issue taxable industrial bonds in the principal amount of approximately four million dollars for the purpose of financing the cost of constructing and equipme- equipping a commercial facility, to, which is Midham Building Supply, um, and lease that project back to Caneables Inc., which is a Missouri corporation. The same resolution also approved the form of a payment in lieu of tax, which is a pilot agreement between the city and the company. The form of the pilot contemplated that the company would complete a lot split so that the improvements financed, financed with the proceeds from the bonds would be located on a separate parcel from the existing facility. The company has indicated that a lot split will not occur and that the project improvements and the existing facility will remain on the same single tax parcel. In pursuant to section eight of the approved resolution, the approval shall terminate if the improvements are not completed prior to August thirteenth of 2020. So Ms. Midham has indicated that construction will not be complete as of to today's date and has requested a termination date extension to December thirty first of 2020 and a revised form of the pilot agreement. The amended resolution in the form of the pilot agreement has been prepared by Cutoc Rock, which is our city's bond counsel, and reviewed by Mr. Jenkins, city attorney. And it's the recommendation of staff that in the interest of economic development of the city, the resolution amending resolution 2019 R fifteen be approved, authorizing the revised form of the pilot agreement and the extent, and extending the termination date of the resolution to December thirty first of 2020.
This is resolution number twenty twenty R zero nine.
Mayor moved to approve resolution as stated.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Carries five, zero, zero. Next item is consideration of a resolution setting a hearing on reducing Dayton Creek Phase Two Special Benefit District Special Assessments. Ms. Landis?
Thank you. Actually, um, our bond counsel Tyler Ellsworth with Cutoc Rock, apologize, is, um, on the line with us and I would like to turn that over to him to present the item to you if that's okay?
That would be just fine.
Mr. Ellsworth?
Uh, thanks, Melanie, and good evening, Mayor and council. Can you all hear me well enough?
We can.
Very good. Um, well, as Melanie mentioned, um, I'll present, uh, just a few remarks regarding this agenda item. And hopefully we'll do so without getting too down in the weeds. This can get fairly complex fairly quickly, but I'll try to keep it high level. Um, provide a little bit of context. Try to then frame the question that we and staff are requesting your direction on this evening. Uh, and if appropriate, if a representative of the developer is there as well this evening, if it would be helpful, if you think it would be appropriate, there may be an opportunity to hear from a representative of the developer as well. So to jump in, um, the background on this agenda item is that in 2019, the city financed the public infrastructure improvements in the Dayton Creek Third Platte, uh, which was financed through the Dayton Creek Phase Two Benefit District. Special, special assessments were levied against each of the properties, uh, in that subdivision. And the city issued general obligation bonds to finance those public improvements. The city knew going into the financing that we would have some level of cost savings, uh, for various reasons. But in, toward the end of, uh, summer 2019, early fall of 2020, we realized that the savings would be considerably higher than we expected, uh, which is actually a good problem to have. Um, but because bonds had been issued and the special assessments had been levied, that left us with the question of how to apply these excess funds that had resulted from the savings. Uh, and the savings are in the amount of approximately one hundred seventy thousand dollars. And so at that time, we identified, uh, two different avenues for applying that hundred seventy thousand dollars. One avenue, um, is to simply return the savings to the property owners in the benefit district through a reduction of the special assessments that had been levied. And the other alternative that we identified at the time was, uh, to work with the developer uh, and have the developer obtain a petition from property owners in the benefit district to modify the benefit district project so that all or portion of that excess fund, um, could be used to reimburse the developer for costs that it had incurred, uh, in connection with the project, but which weren't directly financed, uh, through the bonds and the benefit district financing. Uh, the developer declined to circulate a petition. I, I'm not aware that, uh, the developer ever made any efforts in that regard. Uh, there are sixty-one lots in this subdivision, so admittedly, that would have been maybe a bit cumbersome to obtain sixty-one signatures. Um, but that's really the option that, that we as your bond counsel and staff identified as the only legal way to really change, um, how this money from this benefit district financing could be applied. There, there are very particular rules when you get into benefit districts as to procedures you have to follow, how money can be spent, et cetera. And to make a long story short, in, in lieu of circulating a petition from property owners in the benefit district, the developer has proposed a third option, which is the developer had planned on putting in trails in a part of the Third Platte area. Um, and the developer proposes to have council agree with a legal interpretation of the original benefit district proceedings that trails are included within the original benefit district project. If council agrees with that legal interpretation, then no petition is required and a portion of this hundred seventy thousand dollar excess can be shared with the developer to reimburse it for its out-of-pocket costs. So essentially, to frame the question that's before you all this evening, um, the question is whether to agree with the developer's legal interpretation. And I can certainly provide more background on that if it will be helpful. But essentially, you're asked to either agree with the developer's interpretation that these trails, uh, are part of the original project. And so a portion of this excess fund, uh, can be used to reimburse the developer. And the alternative, um, if you do not agree, then, then the other option apart from tabling this for further consideration is to apply the entirety of the hundred seventy thousand dollar excess to reduce special assessments for property owners in the district.
Mr. Ellsworth, um, this is Steve Ellis. A quick question for you. What interpretation do you agree with?
I think the interpretation that returns the entirety of the excess funds to the property owners is the more sound legal interpretation. I think that's-
That's what I agree with.
I, I think it's a stretch to construe the original benefit district proceedings to include the trail improvements that the developer has requested we do.
Okay. And what is your recommendation then?
My recommendation is to adopt the first of the two resolutions, which we prepared and included in the packet, which would apply the entire hundred seventy thousand dollars to reduce special assessments.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Ellsworth before I ask Mr. Holland to speak on behalf of the developer?
Uh, yeah, um, just wanted to make it clear, these are both, either one would be a resolution for a public hearing. It's actually not providing direction that that monies would actually go back. It's just a public hearing, correct?
That's correct.
And so if we move forward with the first option of refunding or whatever the term would be legally of the hundred and seventy thousand dollars to those property owners during that public hearing, those property owners could hear, um, Mr. Holland present if he wanted to, uh, about the refund of the ninety-three thousand or the seventy-seven, sorry, I got my glasses on, the seventy-seven thousand back to them and then reimbursing the developer for the ninety-three thousand still, even if we go with the first option, correct?
That, that's true. That's true, council member. Um, it makes things a little bit muddy in terms of the notice that has to be provided for that public hearing. Um, I think it's clearer if there's a direction this evening. Um, but if, if council has strong feelings about wanting to leave that door open.
Mr. Ellsworth, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna reframe the question. If, if moving forward with number one, a majority of the property owners say, no, we want what you talked about two weeks ago, is that still an option at that time?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you for simplifying. Engineer made complex.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Ellsworth before we invite Mr. Holland to the lectern? All right. Mr. Holland, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Curtis Holland with the Polsonelli Law Firm. Uh, for the record, my address is nine hundred West Forty-Eighth Place, Suite nine hundred, Kansas City, Missouri, six four one one two. Thank you for hearing us and, uh, appreciate Tyler's comments. We have been working with, uh, Tyler and, and Mr. Hendershot and Melanie for seven, eight months now already on this. And, uh, I, I think that, uh, Mr. Ellsworth has mostly got it correct. I, I would like to offer a couple of comments though about it. It's not unusual in a benefit district, um, if there are leftover monies like this, for those monies to be in essence reallocated. You all talked about reallocation tonight. Uh, as, as long as those improvements are permitted and, uh, allowable, eligible under the Kansas statutes for benefit districts, we think that you have the option, at least, to, uh, reallocate these funds to uh, do what we had essentially wanted to do from the very beginning. And that was to pay certain of these benefit district improvements, as you know, uh, over the, the benefit, prior benefit districts and the current benefit districts that we've pursued with the city here. There are portions of the benefit district that Mr., uh, our, my client, uh, Dr. Vince is paying and essentially out of pocket. They're public improvements, but he's paying for them. Sorry about the mask. It keeps falling down. He's paying for them, uh, out of pocket. And then the other public improvements are being paid for through the benefit district. And that's kind of a little bit what's happened. Uh, here, there are eligible, eligible public improvements, the trails. Uh, they're public, they're open access, there's, uh, for the general public. I, I do believe that they are eligible for, uh, financing under the benefit district. The question that Tyler is asking is, was that the original intent? And, and I guess what I would say in, in regards to that is that when we did the benefit district petition, um, we don't list every single item that could be potentially funded with the benefit district. It would be, uh, end up with a very, very long petition if you did that. Instead, we list generally a few of the items that we're planning to, uh, improve or, or to use the funds for. And, and then we have sort of a catch-all phrase and it says basically, and related improvements. And it's a phrase that was used in the petition. And I think it does allow for, for example, in this case, the, the use of these funds for what we would like to do, and that is to reimburse the developer for those public improvements. It's similar to, and I, in my letter, I compared it to sidewalks. Sidewalks weren't mentioned in the petition either. Sidewalks aren't mentioned in the petition either, but they're being paid for with the benefit district. You don't mention every single line item. So I think legally, you have, you are able to do this. And I like the suggestion that maybe you put it to the public and let the public decide which way to go in the public hearing. I would say this in support of what we're asking is that we had done a pretty methodical calculation of the amount of the assessments that could be taken on by these individual lots. We didn't want to over-assess them because we didn't want to scare away buyers. But we wanted to make them relatively equal across all of Dayton Creek. And in this case, what would happen is the assessments, at least with respect to this being the Third Platte, they would be a little bit less than what the other assessments would be on some of the other lots. And, you know, we don't want that to happen. We want everything to be roughly equal, roughly even. So our ask here is to allow for some of these excess funds. Admittedly, there's some savings in cost, but they are excess and available to finance these improvements and to make things essentially what we had intended to all along. And that is to make the assessments roughly equal for everybody and in the same amount for everybody. What happened in this particular case is these bonds were issued early, and so therefore it triggered early payment of assessments. So my client, in addition, owns many of these lots still, is having to pay extra in that regard, at least early in that regard. So as I laid out in my letter, I think we have the option, you have the option of doing this. I think you're on sound legal ground to do it. Frankly, if you'd like to, we'd like you to do that and consider it and have it be decided, I guess, at the public hearing. At least give it a chance for the public to weigh in on it.
Mr. Holland, what trails in Dayton Creek have been paid for through benefit districts previously?
I'm not sure any have because we've been just starting the trails through that area.
Okay. So there are other trails in place, though?
There's clearly trails throughout the subdivision in the way of walks and so forth and getting between the areas, yes.
So taxpayers come here and say, hey, why am I in this section paying for trails when I could have been refunded? What do we say to them?
I would say you're getting the benefit of the bargain that you got when you bought a lot into Dayton Creek. They were all made aware of the benefit district when they signed to purchase a lot and were aware of these particular improvements that would be made. We're asking no different than to fund any improvement, any public improvement. So I don't see it necessarily as being different than a sidewalk.
Let me ask, and since you're comparing a sidewalk to trails...
Yep.
Who prepared the $2,077,660 estimate? That was the owner's engineering estimate?
That...
For requesting the special benefit...
That would have been...
Correct?
Yes.
And you're comparing a sidewalk versus trails, and you don't consider a $63,000 miss by the engineer who prepared that for you as a small miss, but, I mean, as a... To me, that's a significant miss that now you're coming back and saying, well, we missed it, but we'd like to have that money.
So I guess I would...
And compare that to a sidewalk.
Mr. Holland, I'm gonna ask Ms. Landis to weigh in real quick, if you don't mind, okay? Ms. Landis?
Thank you. I think that the way that these, each of these districts have been set up is that the petition came to us in a different manner than a traditional benefit district and that in a traditional benefit district, you would look at the entire project and you would get an engineer's estimate for the entire thing. You would petition the city for the entire benefit district and those specific items that would be in the benefit district. We have several that are specifically for sewer, some that are specifically for sewer and stormwater drainage and some streets. These in particular for Dayton Creek are set up differently. They know the improvements themselves are much higher than the amount that's included in the petition. The amount that's in the petition is not necessarily the engineer's estimate. It is an amount that was come up with because they determined an amount of assessment that would be considered marketable for the lots within the district or the residential area.
Paying the difference.
Yes, and so that amount times the number of lots is the amount that you received in the petition. So it wasn't necessarily the engineer's estimate that was the petition amount. In this case, they are set up differently for Dayton Creek than they are other traditional benefit districts.
But my point is, is to equate a trail system to a sidewalk, as an engineer, a little bit of a stretch.
Not if the public's using it and it's a public improvement.
That's just my personal opinion.
I appreciate that, and I do want to clarify, and I thank you, Melanie, for stepping in and helping. The dollar amount, when you characterize it as a miss, it really, again, it wasn't necessarily a miss. We, what we wanted to have done on all the lots in Dayton Creek was to have a set amount per lot. And then what we did in each of the various phases, we took that set amount and multiplied it by however many lots there were. So the set amount that we wanted, that we decided on and agreed to, and really frankly, after consulting with the city and our marketing team as to what would be appropriate, we decided on a level. And then we would just multiply that number against all the lots. That $2 million number that you came up with, that's that number. It wasn't an engineer's estimate. So the engineer didn't really miss anything. What we're saying here is there are extra monies available in the SPD that can be used for public improvements. We believe they ought to be and can be used for paying for a portion of the trails. Not all of them, but a portion of them. So that's our ask.
Councilmember Hughes.
Is Phase Two one of the phases that we set aside monies in order to pay any special assessments that maybe didn't get paid, or was that Phase Four? I can't remember.
It was a later phase. You're talking about the escrow, escrow money?
It was a later phase.
Yes, the escrow funds, yes, were a later phase.
Okay, so the Phase Two, is this the one that was almost all sold? Mostly, like 24 of the 31 lots, if my number is correct?
I believe that it is mostly. I don't have those numbers in front of me, though. I don't want to misspeak on that.
Mr. Holland, do you know how many of the lots?
I don't know the actual lot numbers. There were 61 lots in the subdivision in this plat, in this phase of benefit district. And I think they've been very successful. I know that even since this discussion started eight some months ago, the lots have continued to sell and changed hands. And so certainly some of the reimbursement, the savings, if you will, would go back to the developer anyway because they own the lots.
Right.
Some of those lots. But again, we want the assessment amount to be roughly the same on all of the lots themselves. And we don't want one, one phase of the subdivision to be angry, if you will, because their assessments are higher than the other phase of the development.
I don't think I'm so much worried about it being equal among the phases. It's more that we recoup our taxes. I'm more concerned for the county as a whole, I mean, the city as a whole, saying we are, we are more assured that these taxpayers are going to pay their special assessments as we are in a pandemic, as we are in an economic downturn. And in order to ensure that, the best way to do it is to lower the number. I mean, you get better results if the number is lower, and that's where I see it. As a city as a whole, I don't want to subject them to paying somebody else's extra taxes that get missed. If we could simply lower those taxes in any way by money that they've already or contributing to, I agree with that.
Frankly, I also don't want to risk all of the taxpayers to have to defend in a protracted litigation to determine whether Mr. Holland or Mr. Ellsworth is correct. I would be delighted to hear from the property owners, and hopefully some will come to the public hearing. I would, I might, two cents for the council's consideration is alternative number one, and then let's see who shows up to come and talk to us at the public hearing. And if a majority of the property owners show up and say, hey, no, we think this is reasonable, then we have something else to consider. So, anything else, Mr. Holland?
No, and I would, just to close, I would point out that we're not asking for all $170,000 of those funds, just a portion of them. So there would still be, it's a bit of a compromise. So that's what we're asking you to consider.
So whichever alternative, it's going to be Resolution 2020 R-10.
Mayor, move to approve Resolution 2020-R-10 for...
Alternative?
Alternative one, and the amount of $170,000 previous levy in connection with Dayton Creek Benefit District, Special Benefit, Dayton Creek to Special Benefit District.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
And that's the one right now that would return all the money to the taxpayers.
Yes. The other one would be in the amount of 93,000 and my cursor is over there.
That's what I like.
77,000.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 500. Mr. Holland, Mr. Ellsworth, thank you both. This takes us to item number 10, Consideration of Resolution Number 2020-R-11. This is the Cars 2021 through 25 Planning Program. Is Mr. Miller taking the lead on this, Mr.? That'll be you. All right, Mr. Hendershot.
Thank you again. Each year, to participate in the Johnson County Cars Assistance Program for road projects, we are required to submit a five-year plan. We've done this several times through the past. Excuse me, this, the resolution before you this evening identifies the planning tool for 2021 through 2025. It's important to note that even though there are five specific projects identified on this, this submittal does not obligate the city to any of the projects, but is more of a planning tool for the county as they work through their budgeting process. The five tools that we, or five tools, the five projects that we have identified, first is Webster Street from 207th Street to South Street. I'm very pleased to let you know that that Cars application has been submitted and has met the muster for potential funding for 2021. That is yet to go before the council or the Board of County Commissioners for approval, but so far, we're on the right track for that funding for those improvements to Webster Street. Other projects include 199th Street from West City Limits to 169 Highway. If you'll recall, several months ago, this came before the council, and we entered into an agreement with Johnson County to use Cars funding to fund the improvements as they come west for our portion of 199th, which is adjacent to the entry into Veterans Lane, et cetera. So that's, that's the second project. The third project is North Webster Street, 199th Turn Lanes. That would provide right turn lanes at that intersection. Fourth project is 199th from Ridgeview to Renner. That would be improvements, proposed improvements of curb and gutter on 199th east of Ridgeview and the soon-to-be beginning construction of the Roundabout. And the last one is 207th Street from Webster Street to Woodland Road, which is the section that goes past the Fire Department serving the industrial community out there. There are details and cost estimates which were projected, and again, this is a planning tool. It is our staff's recommendation, the approval of the Cars Resolution, acknowledging, review, and acceptance of the requested five-year Johnson County Assistance Road System or Cars program for 2021 through 2025.
I do have a question on this. For the projects that have been identified and look like they're going to be approved for Cars funding by Johnson County with the 50/50 participation. And we were to move forward with those projects of the ones that we've submitted for Cars.
Yes.
Do we have a funding source identified for each one of those for 2021 so that we do not lose out on our 50% portion?
For 2021, we do have a funding source identified. Now, I will, the 2021 project is listed as the Webster Street, which is the 207th to South Street, and we had proposed using excise tax dollars to fund that project. And, I'm sorry, what was the second Cars program for '21?
The 199th Street improvements. Was that?
199, yes, and that one is also funded...
One of them was GO-bonded.
I apologize. The '22 project. I wouldn't say that that's excise tax also, but we did have a funding source for those two immediate projects. And then after that, we had thrown some estimated funding sources out there, but we would need to go back and reconsider those and what kind of impact that might have overall for the future year projects.
Okay. And the other reason is, is so the public hears, is that the fact of the matter is, is that we've approved a budget. A lot of that, like the excise tax and et cetera, is not necessarily going to come out of the 2021 operating budget. It's going to be from other funding sources potentially.
No, there is an excise tax fund, and it does have a valid...
I'm just saying that we're not going to just yank them out necessarily here or there. We're planning on using the excise tax fund, is what I'm...
Yes.
I guess what I was trying to do is, is we're not going to yank it from the police department. We're not yanking it from here.
You are correct. Yes.
They are identified.
I may or may not said that very well, but that's what the intent is, is so people understood that. Those are all my questions.
Anyone else? This'll be R-11.
Mayor, move to approve Resolution Number 2020-R-11.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 500. Thank you, Mr. Hendershot. Next item is Consideration of Resolution Number 2020-R-12. This is for water rates. Ms. Landis, you have the floor.
Thank you. An annual internal rate study was prepared and presented to the City Council on July 9th of this year. And the focus of that rate study is to identify the areas of concern, determine whether the fund balances are adequate, and to make a recommendation regarding current rates to the governing body. The utility rate should be based upon meeting the industry-recommended end-of-year cash balance to cover three months of annual operating costs plus one year's debt service, as well as to ensure that adequate revenues are achieved to fund the upcoming annual budget and future planned projects. And that rate study does is for a 10-year time period that we're looking out to. The water utility served just shy of 1,800 customers in June of 2020. And within the city limits of Spring Hill, the city water district only serves about one-third of the properties within the city. The other water districts serving Spring Hill residents are Water One and Johnson County Water District Number Seven. The most recent rate increase occurred in January of 2019, and no rate increases were implemented for this year of 2020. Based on the financial analysis and the targeted reserve balance, it's recommended that the City Council consider approval of a resolution increasing the base charge per thousand costs to $8.80 and the monthly service charge to $13.33 for the water utility. This rate increase would become effective with the January 2021 bill for the customers, which would be for December 15th through January 15th usage. The cost, the increase, does equate to about $1.50 per month for the proposed rate increase.
Okay.
Mayor, move to approve Resolution Number 2020-R-12.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 500. And as we talk about water rates, as we venture into sewer rates, I want to cabbage on to something that Councilmember Hughes had said. And I appreciate you saying that it equates to a $1.50, not it only equates to a $1.50. That's $18 a month, and we're going to talk about sewer on top, or a year, rather. We're going to talk about sewer on top of that, and we don't know what all of the challenges of all of our residents are. While I was delighted to see unemployment results today reflecting a fewer number of new unemployment claims and current unemployed down to 15 million from a high of 25 million, I don't know how many people are directly affected and how hard it's going to be to pay for water, how hard it's going to be to pay for sewer. We're fortunate that we've got other resources that residents can tap into. But I think that's an important point that she made that we need to keep our eye on as we move forward. Ms. Landis, if you would, go ahead and move us into item number 12, Consideration of Resolution 2020-R-13 Sewer Rates.
Okay, thank you. And an internal rate study was also prepared on the evening of July 9th for the City Council. The wastewater utility served just over 2,600 customers in June of 2020. And the most recent rate increase occurred in January of 2019 for this utility as well. Use of the wastewater is billed at an amount of the first 2,000 gallons and then at a rate per each 1,000 gallons beyond that first 2,000 gallons, plus the service charge. The, based on the financial analysis that was presented and the targeted reserve balance, it is recommended that the City Council approve a resolution increasing the rate for the first 2,000 gallons to $17.43 and the per thousand cost to $8.87. We would recommend leaving the service charge where it is now at $5 per month, and that rate increase would also become effective in January of 2021. That is a 98 cent per month increase for an average user, I might add, which we calculated at about 4,500 gallons per month for an average family use.
Mayor, move to approve Resolution Number 2020-R-13.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Do we, yes, Mr. Mayor, do we continue to replace as-needed water meters?
For the water utility, we do, yes. For those that might come back, we do replace those as needed if there were issues, error... those as needed if there were issues, air, that might show up on our error reports or that might need replaced due to damage to the meter.
Thank you.
And, and remember, Mr. Eckert, a large number of our sewer users aren't on our water, so we're reliant upon other districts to tell us what the usage is. And I know sometimes that's been a little bit challenging. So I think we've got that process refined now, but.
Definitely better.
It, yes, it has been challenging.
I knew it was gauged off of that.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, who seconded that, please?
Mr. Owen.
Mr. Owen, thank you.
Yes. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 500.
Thank you.
I'd also like to remind everybody that in 2019 for 2020, we were able to avoid a rate increase. So this is why we look at these annually as opposed to taking a automated or programmatic approach of triggered automatic increases. So I appreciate your efforts there. I know that these are sometimes challenging surveys to put together. Ms. Landis?
Thank you.
Next item is number 13, consideration of waiver of RFP bid process for chip and seal of Woodland Road. Is that you, Mr. Hindershaw, or Mr. Miller?
Mr. Miller.
All right, Mr. Miller, welcome. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I, I see I'm between you and adjournment, so I'll try to be brief. The issue before us this evening is considering the waiver of the RFP bid process for the chip and seal of Woodland Road. Woodland Road between 199th and 191st Street is a gravel road. Until very recently, it also had a very inadequate drainage structure crossing about a quarter mile roughly north of 199th Street. Boulder Springs 3 has been under construction since the earlier part of the year, and as part of the construction requirement approval for that subdivision, they were required to improve the drainage structure with a reinforced concrete box culvert right next to the railroad tracks there. And they're also required to add aggregate to the first half-mile of Woodland Road north of 199th and to perform a double chip seal on that. And they're, they actually probably would have done that before now. They're getting, getting ready to do that work. Recently, in my work with, is managing the project for the 199th and Ridgeview Roundabout Project, looking at the plans and the detour routes for that, it became clear to me that, that the, the detour route, the normal detour route takes traffic down to 207th and over and back, but that means that folks at the elementary school, if you're coming from town, particularly at the high school and any subdivisions out there, if you're coming from anywhere down here, have as much as a seven-mile detour route, detour to get up to that area, particularly to the high school, which is the, because the roundabout will be closed for a period of time. If you take that 207th route, whereas Woodland is less than a mile of detour route, except it's all gravel. So I explored the option with the developer, day, day three development of Boulder Springs 3, and with the city staff and Johnson County, as a possibility of having them extend their chip seal for the north-half mile of Woodland Road from 191st Street to the half, to the second half-section line. This, and instead of the city trying to put out a bid, having a separate public bid package, which will cost money to get that bid package out, having a separate mobilization and traffic control, Woodland Road right now is closed, and we would have to perform traffic control. So it looked like there was opportunity to, all, to improve Woodland Road for access to the high school, the grade school, subdivisions up that way. So they wouldn't have, they would have like a mile detour instead of a seven-mile detour, quite a bit of which would have been on gravel as well. And so we did work with them. We got some prices from their contractors that are really very, very good prices. I've included that information in here, and I've also included a, an analysis of if we were to go bid that project right now, what it might take to, to do it all, to, to put the bid out, to, to get the contract going, to do our separate mobilization, separate traffic control, separate construction inspection. I got that estimated at about $77,000. If we can incorporate the work into the Boulder Springs chip seal that's going to be done, do it all at the same time, I estimate the cost at just a little bit under $60,000. So there's a fair amount of money to be saved here, and we also have the advantage of ensuring that it gets done this year, which of course we need for the school. If we do this after the roundabouts under construction, it doesn't do us any good. You, Chip Seal is one of those maintenance processes that really loves the summer. You don't want to, as you get into the fall and it cools off, it doesn't work as well. So you really like hot weather to do that. They're chomping at the bit to get going. And, and so that's why we're, we're talking about doing this. We can ensure the work's completed this season. We can get a, an all-weather surface for the school and the detour for all the folks up there while the roundabout's under construction, and we can get it done at a, at a less price than we would if we were to bid it as a public construction project. We did talk with the Director of Finance, City Administrator, quite a bit about funding, and the mayor, as a matter of fact, as well. And we can include this funding in the overall funding for the roundabout project. So we do have a funding source for it in terms of the budgetary impact. And it is, we are requesting this, the Spring Hill purchasing policy does contemplate the waiver of the RFP process through alternative processes. So my recommendation is that we waive the RFP bid process for the chip and seal of Woodland Road. If that is acceptable to, to the council, we have a succeeding agenda item dealing with the actual agreement to do that, to perform that. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Is there going to be any grading or base put down to perhaps increase the longevity of the chip and seal?
Yes.
Can I elaborate on that a little bit?
We've got, I've got funding in there for about another roughly two, three inches of aggregate. I'd like to put, you know, more is better, of course, but that section of the Woodland, Ludwig Road really has a pretty fair base on it for gravel road. It's, it's not too bad. I've driven it, of course, several times and looked at it. We're also going to improve, our, our agreement with the county is a, a small part of that road is actually in Johnson County, 600 feet of it. We're going to improve all of the double chip at all and do the, the base, and Johnson County's, they're going to, crews are going to go out and ditch it for us. So a road's only as good as, a ditched street's only as good as getting good ditches. And so they're actually going to plan that work just very soon, hopefully before we get out there to chip it. So we're going to get, their, their skin in the game is going to be ditching the sides of the road for us. So I feel pretty comfortable with it. You know, a double chip seal on aggregate is not a, a final solution. But considering the, the money we're talking about and the impact it'll have on allowing folks to get safely to the schools and other places up there, I think it's a, a pretty good partnership between the, the two governmental entities and the developer.
And didn't you say that the developer had to put a base down as part of the improvement agreement?
They also put aggregate, some base down, yes.
And what was that again, like three or four inches?
I think they put more like five or six.
Okay, so they've already improved it five to six inches on a significant portion.
Well, south of us. We're, we're talking about north of where they work. But, but a lot of the area they had to put rock on had been, had to be completely torn up and reworked for the new box culvert anyway. So it was almost a new road there. So they had to put a minimum, have a minimum of six inches of aggregate, you know, where they had torn the road pretty much out to change grades, get over the box and stuff.
And what do you expect a lot, just so people here understand, what is the service life you expect of this chip and seal?
Well, I, I, I think it'll last several years. I think over time, depending on the winters, you're going to have some, what you have with chip seals, it doesn't all go bad. Typically, you have potholes developing, and the ditching will help that tremendously. If you allow water to get, get up under, into that aggregate, you're going to have bigger problems. So that's why I feel like the partnership with the county to ditch it is a very, very important part of the, of the project.
I guess my point is, is that in our capital improvement program for about two or three years down the road, we need to make sure we account for that chip and seal if it needs to be done, be put into the capital improvement program.
Funding, funding allowed, I usually would like to try to do a double chip and then come in, yeah, three to five years, depending on a programmatic basis. You look at every road to do some type of an overlay on the chip before it starts giving you trouble, before you have to dig back down into the base through it and everything.
My point is to make sure that we account for that. As, I mean, the capital improvement plan is a living document. My point is, is to make sure that we account for that when we do our capital improvement program in the future years. So.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Miller? Would entertain a motion.
Mayor, move to approve a waiver of a RFP bid process of chip and seal of Woodland Road.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 500. And Mr. Miller, item number 14, approval of reimbursement contract.
Thank you, Mayor. In accordance with the discussion we just had, in order to facilitate the coordination with the developer of the date of the Boulder Springs project, which is day three development, staff created a, an agreement with them where they pay their contractor. Once we've accepted the work, the city reimburses them the approximately $60,000 for the work that'll be done on Woodland Road. It'll be done in conjunction and coordination with the chip seal work that they are going to be doing on Woodland Road and should be done fairly soon. The agreement also ensures that the work is bonded and that we receive appropriate certificates of insurance from the developer or their actual contractors. From a funding review, of course, as I indicated, we can include the funding for this construction in the overall 199th and Ridgeview financing plan, and staff recommends that the governing body approve the reimbursement contract between the City of Spring Hill and Day Three Development for the chip and seal of Woodland Road and authorize the mayor to execute that agreement.
Mayor, move to approve the reimbursement contract of chip and seal of Woodland Road.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 500. Mr. Miller, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For executing the documents tonight. Lastly, on the agenda's discussion item, at the request of Councilmember Owen, requesting a change to the appointment process, currently state statute as well as ordinances, contemplate a mayoral appointment to a board or commission upon the advice and consent of the council, meaning that a majority of the council has to approve any appointment. And Mr. Owen believes that there is an opportunity to make some changes there. So, Mr. Owen?
Thank you, Mayor. As a lot of you know, right now, our appointment process, we have a number of boards that are short people. We've had to have some meetings canceled, unfortunately.
Now, going to be clear, they're short right now because you wanted to have this discussion, and in, out of respect for that, I didn't make any appointments. So please don't try and capitalize on that.
No. Yeah, you know, I made this request in January.
I think we've had a few emergencies come up since then, too.
And what I'm looking at is, I've looked around and saw some other places do it, and it seemed like a nice idea to look at, is instead of the mayor doing it by himself, have a panel of the mayor, the president of the council, and a council member to interview people that want to be on the boards and commissions, and that all three would agree to the personnel they want to appoint to those positions. Maybe help get a little more diversity in there, take some options of listening to some other people. Right now, I know it is a responsibility of the mayor and is his prerogative to do what he wants to do with it. And then we approve those as is committed. I understand that. So that was my main reason for that, was just to give us an option of having more input from the council upfront, and to do those, and also to even possibly look at term limits for some of these boards. Some people we have on these boards have been there quite a while. They're doing good jobs, but I think it would maybe helpful to rotate some people through. I've had a few citizens approach me that they've put in for requests to be on boards, and unfortunately, whatever reason, were never contacted at all. So they felt a little disappointed that they never even got a phone call. Now, paperwork didn't get in, whatever it could be, I don't know. So that's what I'm looking at, and that's what I'm proposing, what we think about.
That add to the length of the process. I mean, it seems to me that if you have one person who only has to adjust their schedule to look through applicants and interview and narrow down the suggestion, would be a lot easier than having multiple people trying to take from their time and having to do that. It just seems that would lengthen it to me. And as, unless I'm wrong about this, we don't have an overwhelming number of applications for all of our boards to begin with.
And I agree with you, Ms. Hughes.
And we do keep them on file.
And, Mr. Mayor, you involve on significant ones at times where you feel that it is applicable, a council member at times. I, I've been at times on the appointment process, and we've done that in the past. So to sit there and to make a formal change, I think, is unnecessary. I'm going to be honest, in 15 years of being on council with about six or more council presidents, we've never had an issue where a council president has taken issue with the appointment process of this and to sit there and say that it's out of line or this or that. I just don't really see the need for this. Like Ms. Hughes said, we're just going to add another level of time.
Respect Mr. Owen's position. And I, I, I encourage, I love that he came up here with a new idea and a new stroke, but I do think it adds to the bureaucracy. I think it will slow things down. I do think that we should encourage the mayor to say, the board has a position. Would anybody like to look at this with me beforehand? But I don't think we should make a formal change because I think that would just.
Ms. Hughes, I've done that, for example, with the broadband task force.
You asked me, yes, absolutely. And we did interview them together. I mean, I find that you're very fair in that those things, and I do think that we don't have a lot of boards.
And here's the other thing about it, is that sometimes we do them as a slate, but there has been council members in the past who have issues with the slate. I have been one of those, where I had an issue with a certain person on the planning commission or the green board, and I've requested to have that one item or that one individual on that appointment taken off to have that be discussed. So, and then we can do the appointments on the others. So I just don't feel that it's necessary to change all of this up. And if you're talking about term limits, you get to vote on whether or not we do this appointment of the people. So there's, I don't see the point of a term limit. If you're going to approve them or not approve them, then you get to vote yes or no on them. I mean, that's essentially where that, we have the say of whether or not they have a term limit. I don't think that that's a necessary thing either.
I think we have a mayor, and we don't need a junior mayor and someone to want to be empowered. And I think this is a power grab. I think it's a waste of time. And I think we move forward how things are going. And frankly, I'm embarrassed that this is happening. It's like, the way to become council president is interesting. The role that you want to play as a council president and move this council is something that I'm strictly opposed against. I have confidence in the mayor. If there was no confidence in the mayor, maybe this would be discussed, but no need. Let's move forward and continue things.
Well, I don't think it's a power move.
I think it is.
I see, it's the same thing.
Quite frankly, it's a power move.
I'm looking at options to.
It's, it's what.
Well, we can talk about that, but we spent a significant portion of money because you're trying to delve into issues that you're not entitled to, of almost, weighing almost like $10,000 of what we spent money on. So to sit there and say this is not a power move.
And I will continue delving into issues in the city.
Okay, so then don't complain about how much money we spent on uniforms when we spent almost that same amount of money, because you do not know what the roles and responsibilities are as a council president.
It should be what's best for the city, not what's best for Steve Owen.
We've spent $7,500 on you. $7,500 on you.
That's enough. That's enough.
So in, in my opinion, I think it's a good thing to get more involved in that process. I just think it reflects well on the, on the mayor and city councilors. That's my position on that. I don't see any power grab or any overreaching. I just see it people wanting to get involved in the process.
Okay. Although it appears that a majority of the council is not looking to make changes there.
And that's hard.
All right, very good. Would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session. And do we want to do this for, what do you mean, Mr. Jenkins, five minutes?
Yes, Mayor.
All right.
Five minutes.
Mayor, move. We go into executive session to discuss with and receive advice of council regarding requested production of documents pursuant to the exception for matters which would be deemed attorney-client privileged communication under the Kansas Open Meetings Act for five minutes, and the open meeting will resume in the council chambers at, do we want to take a brief?
No, we can move.
No recess? So we would start at, what do we want to say, 8:50?
8:46.
8:46. And that means we would, can resume at 8:51.
We do not anticipate formal action following. Zero second.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 500. We will carry on to executive session. We can go this way.
Did he announce who's in attendance? It's on the, yeah, okay.
I didn't, I don't hear a lot, am I right?
Yeah, it's okay.
If you ask.
If you announced who was in attendance, and I think you did.
I may or may not have. I don't remember. It's been a long day for me. I need to- I may or may not have. I don't remember. It's been a long day for me. I need to clarify about all the motions.
No, I think we're good. The mayor fucking did as well, so.
What happened?
They didn't designate who was in attendance.
Mayor? We need council to come back in. We didn't identify who was to be in here.
That's what I was wondering. I didn't think, I was, he was correct.
I just...
Oh, you're correct.
Yeah, we need to, we need to amend the motion.
I didn't identify.
Well, it's been a long day. I thought I had.
And I've had some motions.
So, you make a motion to amend the motion?
Take up a amendment of the motion. Mr. Leighton, I understand you wish to amend the motion.
We need to amend the motion because I did not include the following persons or to be in attend, in attendance, Jim Hendershot, City Administrator, and Frank Ains Chicken's, Junior City Attorney. I apologize. It's been a long day with me.
We have a friendly second. All those in favor, aye. Motion carries five zero zero.
Jim, you're on a four-headed steed up there. I'm glad you got that. You're coming through. Oh, no problem. No problem.
I will make sure I remember that.
Yeah, southwest corner.
Okay.
We just constructed a turnway to go south.
Okay, so a turnway north, south. A right turnway on the ready first, on the...
You're gonna fuck Andy and I look at him.
You did. Do you think that's too long?
No, we'll be fine.
Um, and if it's too much, then that's okay. Well, yeah, so if that's not enough, it shouldn't be a lot of, too much, so you have to... Okay, perfect.
Right. Well, we could...
Do we have to do it ourselves, or do we, within?
Time.
Okay, I understand that that was the first thing. Nice job, Jee. That's so cool that you get on those.
And, and that's what, after...
No, it hasn't happened since. I saw all yours when I was there. Wow, yeah, I mean, all, all of them are summons.
We have about thirty seconds left. We are back in open session. The discussion was limited to the topic stated. No votes were taken, no decisions were made. Would entertain your motion to adjourn.
So, Mr. Ecker, I'll take the second. Did you?
I had announcements.
Oh, gosh, sorry. We didn't do announcements and reports.
Tell Mr. Ecker I want to get home.
I'm sorry, Ms. Hughes. My apologies. I have no announcements. Mr. Owen?
Nothing.
Um, Mr. Leighton, for one thing, uh, to piggyback on what you were saying, Ms. Hughes, I saw something on TV about three million for rural on, for rural districts, like rural cities, for three million on the Department of Commerce for broadband.
Uh-huh.
Is that what you were specifically talking about? Because that's actually something different than I thought you might be talking about.
Well, I'm not sure how the, um, grants are going to work yet. I was listening to the League of Kansas Municipalities, um, during their webinar a couple of weeks ago, and they were going other so, they were going over some of the outlines cities have done for asking for CARES and Sparks funding, and some of the things counties can do, and they said that there's this talk of an upcoming grant program that specifically relates to broadband in, 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 in education. Currently, though, and that's part of my announcement, so I'll get to that when...
I was just wanted to make sure. I don't want to steal your thunder. I just wanted to make sure because I had heard about that, but I don't want to talk about it.
I think there's where it'll come, but there's stuff we can do now, too.
Okay, I'm gonna leave it alone because I want you to have the ability to talk about that. Um, the only thing I'm gonna request, did Mr. Miller leave?
I believe he did.
Okay.
Yes.
Can he provide us an update on the actual Webster Street improvements that we're talking about for the car funding? He had an update.
Yes.
He's, I never have seen the, the cores results.
Okay.
And that, I think that would be useful. Um, but also really what the update is, so we can provide that to the community.
Okay.
Uh, because it's a high-profile project for our community. I think that we need to communicate that this is a priority and that this is what our plan is moving forward. So, if we can get that, I'd appreciate that.
Will do, sir.
Anything else, Mr. Leighton?
No, that's it. Thank you.
All right, Hughes.
Yes, so I wanted to talk more about our opportunities for grants and grant fundings. Um, I just, I had talked to Mr. Hendershot about this a little bit, but I kind of just wanted to go into a little bit more. For the CARES and the Sparks funding, we get to get reimbursed, but my understanding is that as a city, if we pay people that are working on COVID-related issues, we also get reimbursement from that. Currently, with the school board being so busy with trying to open on time or when they're opening, which currently I think is August twenty-sixth, all of those questions that they're going through, they might not have the opportunity to talk specifically with their students who are going to do distance learning. And one of the ways that we can help our students, and I'd like you to ask the county about this, is if we can assign someone to work with, uh, households that are going to do distance learning, and we could reimburse that as a promoting of distance learning, uh, reimbursement. And so that we have a city staff liaison who the students' families can come and talk to about what they would need to do remote learning. A lot of them might be concerned that they want to but can't for specific reasons, such as the need for, um, a computer, such as the need for internet. Um, it does appear that we can also ask for those things or help them specifically ask for those things to be reimbursed through the end of December. So, perhaps we could have a liaison staff member who could help fill out those requests, those aid forms for hotspots, for, uh, computers, for promoting of distance learning. I'd also like to see if we could get some hotspots or some extenders around our buildings to promote tutoring and/or distance, uh, work halls. You know, we used to do the gym and we can't do it anymore. I mean, unless we're gonna spread them out. I just don't know how we would do that with staffing and cleanliness and everything, but...
That's the biggest challenge. And we had the reception room, but then to be able to get that clean. Are you talking about extenders to penetrate out further into the parking lot?
Into the parking lot, or maybe some, maybe we actually pay for some hotspots that people can, um, lend. We can lend them out and bring them back at certain times of the day. We maybe get a dozen, and families come in and they get them for a week, so they can do their, uh, extra homework, or maybe they're doing a larger science project, anything like that. Um, and then maybe we could put out a little, a questionnaire on Facebook and just ask how many people would want that or need that, you know, have them three questions as to why they might need it, and then we can judge how many we might need to invest in.
Could I ask you to work with Mr. Hendershot and Ms. Schuper to kind of get that survey? That'll help us, you're right, that'll help us understand quantity.
Mm-hmm.
As well as level of interest, and then if there are funds available to reimburse for, for the staff time, Jim, frankly, if we had to get an attempt in to do that, I think that would be certainly a good use of funds.
Mayor, I think that's a great idea. Ms. Hughes, I did have a question for you. Did they talk about, I know you're talking about students, but we also have people that are gonna be, me and that mic tonight, um, people that might be unemployed.
Yes.
Would they be also eligible for something like that? Could we also make it so...
And the county is allowed to create their own funds to reserve some of those CARES and Spark monies within the county to help those individuals and businesses who have utility concerns due to COVID unemployment, that have, um, other kinds of, 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 of financial hardships. It could be anything from food to utilities to housing. Obviously, the state does the unemployment program, but our staff member, um, could also help them, our citizens and maybe other county, you know, just a large group, help them apply for those, our businesses, um...
We could work with the chamber as well.
Absolutely, absolutely. We could, we could have a, a contingent, uh, uh, to help people get this aid that they mother, might otherwise not know how to navigate that system.
Mayor, this is what I might actually suggest, is I think you have some really good ideas and you actually have a very good passion for it. You've already done a lot of work on this. Um, would we have an issue with making her kind of like our council liaison between?
No, I, by asking her to...
On every, not just, not just this, but I mean, not just...
Package of issues.
The whole package, I think.
And, and I think where we could bring in Ms. Garrity from a director of community services perspective, we should do that and see how we, see how far we can go with this to provide that level of support to our residents.
That's great. And Chief, you might also be eligible for the radio upgrade for public safety grant. Yes.
I think we've had a good person for that.
And that, certainly because we're already in that process, I know, I'll use the term shovel-ready, um, which is not, not quite what we need for the radios, but we're ready to do that and can satisfy that by the end of the year.
I'm sorry.
Radios, could we actually get that accomplished by the end of the year?
To actually purchase them?
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
Okay, so, because that's one of the requirements.
Yes, you do have to purchase it and get the reimbursement, but before you purchase them, we can simply ask. We can send in a request and say, "Is this an approve?" And give our argument before we expend the money that we may have put on hold. So, we can do that first step first and ask if they would approve it, have them take a pre-look, and then we can expend the dollars and, and request it formally. Yeah, and I do have a grant request, um, through the government for the radios as well, so.
Right.
I don't know what we did.
Whichever one we can get first. If we have an opportunity, I think that'd be phenomenal. So, very good. All right, anything else, Ms. Hughes? All right, thank you very much. Mr. Ecker?
Uh, the walls are looking good, and, uh, that makes our family happy about it.
Mr. Graves?
Uh, just a reminder, today started free meals, um, from USD two thirty for kids I looked at just now, age one to eighteen. Um, you do have to register on the USD two thirty site, um, but I know they had done this previously in the past. It was a big success, so if you know people or spread the word, um, they are doing those free meals, um, and all the info's on their website, so.
Very good. All right, thank you very much. Mr. Hendershot, staff reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just to add on to what Councilwoman Hughes meant, or said, no, meant what she said, um, this CARES and Spark funding opportunities is an hourly evolving issue. Um, we will be participating tomorrow in a webinar that is specifically for broadband and digital activities. Um, so I, to find out exactly how we, how we do that. Johnson County has developed a part, uh, a portal, if you will, um, to enter in these types of projects that are, the, the, the big criteria is they cannot be, um, previously budgeted. These are unbudgeted expenses, but it does, but digital access is a big part of that. I am watching that like a hawk, I assure you, looking for those opportunities to improve broadband in, into, into Spring Hill.
Get that information to Ms. Hughes, would you, so she has availability, maybe she can hop on.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, anything else?
Um, the only other thing is, uh, we had a, a very spirited meeting at Public Works this morning, beginning our talks about, uh, snow removal. It's not too early. It's only August, but snow removal's starting, so we are moving down that path. Um, so, yeah, I'm, I'm excited on the way the three superintendents are headed, so.
Okay.
Nothing else, sir?
Make sure to remind us or bring us up to date before you buy salt, because that was a large budget item that we considered holding off on, but it wasn't in that first four hundred thousand that we, it was in the second two hundred. Do you remember that? Melanie, we talked about that, right?
Yes, but it's not that we wouldn't purchase the salt. It's that we wouldn't fund a portion of the salt purchased from the general fund as opposed to Consolidated Highway, which is where it's, it's all budgeted from.
Okay. Anything else?
No, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Chief Henson? All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
No report.
Ms. Lindis?
No report.
And Mr. Burton?
Yes, I have approached.
Welcome. Yes, please.
Mayor of the council, I thought I'd take real quick and with COVID and everything and a little bit of an update on development and what is going on in the city. As of, uh, the end...
Oh, that helps. Oh, all right. And maybe the residents can hear me as well. So, as of the end of July, we had seventy-one new single families, and last year we were at eighty-eight. Uh, but they have picked up, uh, quite a bit here lately. Overall, this year, we're up permits, one hundred and fifty-nine, uh, last year it was one thirteen. Our overall valuation is up eleven million from last year, and the, uh, fee assessment is up eighty-two thousand. A little bit...
Can I interrupt you for just a moment?
Yes.
There are a couple of things that I want to clarify. When we talk about that increase in valuation, we're not jumping up and down excited because county appraiser came through and said everybody's properties were so much more. We're talking about increases in value because of new properties, whether it be commercial, whether it be residential, multifamily. We're talking about enhancements to existing properties. So, I, I just want to be clear about that. No one's excited that more money may come in just simply because county appraiser thinks your property's worth so much more.
No, this has absolutely nothing to do with county appraisal.
And, and same goes for that increase in fees. It's not because we've increased those fees and we're just really excited about it. It's because people are continuing to invest in Spring Hill, and those fees represent their, their permits or other associated fees.
That is correct. Thank you. And also, keep in mind, the valuation that we place on our reports is strictly the construction. There is no utilities or land costs on those. So, we do not permit or assess fees to the land cost and utilities. So, uh, in the commercial, O'Reilly's, uh, which is seventy-five hundred square foot building, uh, looking to open the end of this year, or the end of this month, beginning of next month, they're stocking right now. It, uh, ended up to be a really good project. One thing I do want to say, all these projects that we've worked on and have going, there was absolutely no incentives given to get these projects here. Uh, so there was no tax breaks or any type of incentives. Peach State Roofing, which is a six thousand square foot commercial building at Country Meadows, has started. The footings will be inspected tomorrow, so it literally has started. Uh, we, across the street from there in Country Meadows, uh, EK Diesel, which would be about a nine thousand square foot facility, uh, they are scheduling to start. We're working through the building plans right now. Uh, they do have a sign-up. It's right next to the event center. So, very good people. They are located in Paola right now. Uh, Cummins up there beside the, uh, RV storage and all, in phase two, they're getting ready to put a seventy-five hundred square foot, which would be RV repair, boat repair, and automotive-type, uh, repairs. Uh, we consistently, or there's a real good relationship and project at one hundred and ninety-ninth and one sixty-nine that we've... And one sixty-nine that we've talked about and it is still, um, we're still working with them. As well as the apartments, there, they have purchased an additional five acres. And that is, uh, in rezoning right now, um, for commercial. Boulder Springs, of course, has added twenty-two. Oakwoods First, which is exciting that we're getting going on that. Uh, which that'll be, it's fifty-two new single families and there's a twenty-seven multifamily type area there that's already plotted.
I, I don't, I don't think you're giving yourself and everyone else enough credit here, so I want to. Oakwoods is a once-defunct subdivision that had improvements in place for, we're coming up on fifteen years, right? Fifteen years those improvements have been in place. It has passed ownership multiple times. It's in the city's water district, which means we're going to be adding new customers to our water district. And in this, as well as a lot, each of these projects that it is the hard work of all of city staff. But it's also a lot of hard work, arm twisting, relationship building that Pat has been doing. And I want to make certain that he and his team. Get a lot of credit for what has been happening. And then that can't happen without. The clerk doing her job, without the finance director and assistant city administrator doing her job, without Mister Hendershot doing his job. And without Chief Henson providing a safe and predictable environment for people to move to or people to make a significant investment in. I know the building was already in there, but Rain Dance Studios has moved in.
That's correct.
That once vacant building, which, for those of you who understand how property tax works on commercial properties. Vacant buildings don't generate a tremendous amount of revenue when you do the revenue method of valuation. Having it occupied increases the value, which means that increases the value to taxpayers. So. Pat, I, I really just wanted to take an opportunity to do that. I know you don't like it when I do that. That's just too bad.
Thank you, but I also.
On top of that, though, isn't that one subdivision also in the South Sur benefit district?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'm just saying, I mean, how important that is. We have not had, since, it was before I was on council. That South Sur benefit district, we have not had. A sizable, um, entity like this.
Come into the South Sur benefit industry.
Yet, period. So this would be the very first one.
Really help.
That, so that is, that's just, I'm, that is one of the things that would make me so excited.
I would like.
Dozens of us have taught our kids how to drive out of.
Actually, that's my kids come at the practice area.
Right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thrilled. I'm gonna have to find somewhere else for my youngest, but I, I just, Pat, I just didn't want that opportunity to slip by.
And I do want.
I'm gonna interrupt you.
I do want to also, uh, commend the school district. With their facilities and all, um, when I talk with developers and all and then they do look and. One of the comments is, is such a nice school district.
Sure, oh, absolutely.
So I do want to, uh, make sure that we include the schools.
Right, absolutely.
Uh, just real quick, so, um, Oakwoods are, um. Oh. Brookwood Farms adding fourteen more lots in, uh, phase six, actually. Foxwood, uh, about twenty more lots there. And there's a lot of talk about them, uh, doing other areas as well, and that's Summit Homes. So, um, and then Woodland Crossings, which is right off of Woodland and one hundred and ninety-ninth street. Uh, phase one is for final plat there, um, gonna start immediately. So there's a lot going on. Um, and I, just some of the real quick, you know, we have, um, Foxwoods putting in a pool. Boulder Springs is putting in a pool. So within the subdivisions also, they're doing amenities, uh, and expecting growth. And as obviously Mid-Am and the school districts have three facilities going. So I just wanted to give you a quick update, um, that, you know, even with COVID, we, we're seeing, um, good results and. And more and more people are looking in our area.
Very good. Any questions for Mister Burton? All right, thank you very much. Now I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, ma'am.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.